Everyone that's out here tonight, from the public that come out to witness this night tonight, and for those who have come to speak, also to our employees that have come to the reception for the new school board members, we appreciate your turnout tonight and for them. I also want to welcome real quick our new school board members. We've got some new board members here on the dais tonight, and on my far right is Ashley Burgoyne for District Two. And we welcome you here tonight. And from District Five, next to her is Holly Cave. Holly, it's nice to have you here tonight as well. And to my left is the new Vice Chair, Sarah Hurst from District Four. So, welcome. I want to welcome you guys here on this board. And I look forward to doing great things with you guys for the Rockham County School Board. The first thing we need to do tonight, board members, we need to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Lore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Next, tonight is something new that's on our agenda here in Rockingham County. It once was on our agenda back in 2010. And as the Chairman of the Board, I have decided we will follow suit with our local elected officials, such as the Rockham County Board of Supervisors, and state delegates and representatives, along with the United States Congress, and open the governing body, this governing body, with an invocation. I believe the majority of our community would agree with me. We need God's help in the days we are living in. And so, tonight, if you would join me in a moment of prayer, if you don't, that's okay as well. But I'm going to say a prayer as we open up tonight. Heavenly Father, we need your wisdom, your discernment, understanding, and patience. Protect our children, our teachers, administrators, and staff while they are in our schools. May your peace that goes beyond all understanding rest upon our schools. Amen. Will you rise with me today if you can, and join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this moment, I want to open the public hearing for the 2024-2025 school operating budget. So at this moment, it is open for public comments. Seeing that there was no names filed upon the paper, at this time, we will close those public comments tonight. This is something that has to be done by Virginia Code, that the school board says that the school board has to do. So every year, it's something that we go through for the public to be able to make comments for the operating budget for the coming year. At this moment, we're getting ready to go into public comment. But I do want to read the rules for public comments. And to get started off for this year, 2024, in our policy, it says right now that each speaker will recognize in the order listed on the sign-up sheet, and be limited three minutes. And when you come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes tonight. And if you go longer after the beep, I'll let you know. Speakers should have their comments reflect the character counts pillars in all comments, being respectful of others, and setting a good example for our students. Speakers should have their comments reflect the character counts pillars in all their comments, as I said, being respectful. Speakers should only speak once about any item unless they have new material to add. All comments should be directed to the school board as a whole, not to individual school board members. Debate during this time is prohibited. Emotional outbursts, i.e. any form of cheering or shouting from the audience, is not acceptable. And the public comment period will be limited to a 30-minute total to the meeting. The chair may at any time end the speaker's comments that violate these rules. Once the public comment period has been closed, no further public input will be invited unless clarification is requested by a board member. And last, speakers who have addressed the school board within the last 30 days should instead allow others to speak during the public comment period. First on the list tonight is Ms. Nancy Bassett. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you. Chairman Cross, school board members, Dr. Shiflett, as the President of the Rockingham County Education Association, I just wanted to take a moment to welcome Ms. Hurst, Ms. Cave, and Ms. Burgoyne to the school board. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you this year. And if you have any questions or any concerns, just let me know. Thank you for being here.
Next on the list is Michael Stimple.
Thank you, Board. Dr. Shiflett, for your opportunity to speak with you today. I would like to start off with this from scripture in the Christian Bible. "And when you pray, do not be like the hypocrites; for they love to pray standing in the synagogues and on the street corners and to be seen by others. Truly I tell you, they have received their reward in full." Let's talk about the six pillars of the Character Counts program: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. I'd like to focus on the two of those pillars. Let's talk about trustworthiness and respect as it relates to the current board makeup. Respect. Unfortunately, we have a board member who has consistently shown a lack of character when publicly interacting with board members and the superintendent. The board member has a history of talking out of turn, interrupting others, and continued to speak when they are asked to stop. They have publicly called the previous superintendent a liar, including a meeting, there was a meeting where they were interrupted the chair at least six times, and three of those times, they were asked, after they had been asked to stop. If this board member had been in any classroom setting, they would have been sent to the principal's office immediately. Let's talk about trustworthiness. Another school board member at a school board meeting last year, then a candidate for school board, made blatantly false statements when talking about a cheerleading competition event. This person tried to demonize trans students by stating that a transgender student was in a girl's locker room with other female students, when in fact, there was no transgender students present in the restroom. If character counts in our CPS, then our public officials should reflect these six pillars of character. I would like to remind, also remind the Board the importance of First Amendment principles as it relates to the freedom of religion. The text of the Virginia Statute of Religious Freedom says the following, and I believe these are the words of Thomas Jefferson, but don't quote me on that. "The impious presumption of legislators and rulers, civil as well as ecclesiastical, who, being themselves but foulable and uninspired men, have assumed dominion over faith of others, setting up their own opinions and modes of thinking as the only true and infallible and as such endeavoring to pose them on others, hath established and maintained false religions over the greatest part of the world and through all time." So I would like to remind each board member, I have a copy of the Constitution and the Establishment Clause to remind you, establishment of religion is to be respected. And yeah, so I have a copy of the Constitution and the Virginia Statute, and I highlighted things so you could...
All right. Thank you. Next on our list is Sandra Parks.
Greetings. My name is Sandra Parks, and I'm a resident of Bridgewater, Virginia. I'm a retired librarian with 33 years of experience in developing library collections for kids. I'm also a National Board Certified Teacher. I speak for students' freedom to read, which is a danger. As stated before, it's a core belief that books should be windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors. Thank you, Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop. Every child should be able to see themselves, a mirror, in books accessible in their school library. Not all of our kids grow up with a mommy and a daddy and two cars in the garage. Families come in all kinds of shapes and sizes. Some of our kids are hungry. Some of them are homeless. Some are gay. Some are transgender. Some have experienced racism because of the color of their skin. Some have immigrated to our country, having experienced horrors we can't imagine that caused their family to leave their home. Some have been physically abused, and some have been sexually abused. Reading is a way for kids to understand their world, and it makes them feel less alone. Books as windows help those kids whose experiences are different to develop empathy and understanding of the lives of others. Empathy is a good thing. It builds stronger, more resilient, more compassionate kids. And a sliding glass door helps them step forward into a better world. Now, based on campaign rhetoric, this board apparently plans to limit access to books for kids under the flimsy excuse of pornography, using lists passed around by parents who actually haven't read the books, that they accuse of being inappropriate. Pornography has been defined as anything that they don't like, instead of recognizing that legally, a book must be judged as a whole, that anything considered sexually explicit must be considered within the context of the entire work, and that literary quality and the purpose of the book are key considerations in any reconsideration. A database developed by Mom Through Liberty or similar organizations that only lists sections out of context is not an appropriate or an acceptable selection tool. Reading is an essential skill. Research shows that kids read more when they have choice in their reading material and a wide selection of interesting books. And I've worked with enough kids and enough of the books on the banned books list to know that, in fact, kids aren't reading them for the excerpts. They're reading them for the story, for the characters, and they recognize a plot device when they see one. Taking away students' access to diverse books will decimate their interest in reading. And if there's not free inquiry, what's even the point? For many kids, the school library is the only access to books that they have. Not everyone can get to a bookstore or a public library. And I remind you that those who censor books... Thank you.
Next on the list is Wes Kite. Hi, good evening. My name is Wes Kite, and I am a lifelong resident of Rockingham County, as well as being educated in the Rockingham County Public Schools. I graduated from the Virginia Military Institute with an undergraduate degree, and Eastern Midnight University with my graduate degree. I am a District Five resident and father of four boys, three of which attend our county schools. I reviewed the proposed agenda for today, and I'm worried about some of the erroneous violations of our First Amendment rights. First of all, starting off the school board meeting with a prayer, I believe is a violation of the Establishment Clause. I am a Christian, but I also support private prayer in my home, in my car, my church, in my time. However, I recognize this is public school. No one should feel that their religion is less than anything by a public school opening with a Christian prayer. I feel like the board is abusing power and violating rights. Given that senior students are required to attend at least one school board meeting, this means that there are often students in attendance that will be forced to hear a prayer, that they may devalue their religious traditions, and that if the board is exerting its power over students' personal religious beliefs. Secondly, the agenda simply states library books, with no policy or explanation. I certainly hope the board is not planning to override policy and procedure currently in place to remove books, simply at the board's discretion. Never in the course of human history has the banning of books been remembered on being on the correct side of history. From the days of Inquisition, where the books written by Protestant reformers, scientific thinkers such as Galileo, were banned to the oppressive regimes of Hitler, Stalin, and Pol Pot, banning books has been used to control population and force religious and political compliance. Please do not support the banning of any book that our librarians and professionals here in the county have already approved and deemed appropriate for our schools. Thirdly, I noticed there are multiple changes proposed to the public comments, to the public comments at the school board meetings, such as restrictions on where and how people may address the board, as well as banning all signs. I feel this too is an infringement on our First Amendment rights. While I understand that decorum and kindness should prevail in the meetings, we must recognize that America is built on compromise and hearing opposing views. Limiting one's ability to speak freely is indeed a violation of free speech. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, I have serious concerns about the proposed adoption of Governor Youngkin's model policy that denies many students their rights. Requiring a teacher to potentially use a student's name that they do not accept is dehumanizing. It also destroys that student's trust, and it might be the only person that that student actually trusts in the entire world. Finally, I have serious concerns about potentially the county facing multimillion dollars worth of lawsuits that could be costly to our school system, taking precious funds away from the students that need it and deserve it. Thank you for your time.
Next is Holly, and I apologize, I cannot say your last name. I'm really sorry.
It's Holly Uzdanovics. Uzdanovics. I've spoken at the last few school board meetings, referencing the redistricting proposal, which is also on the list tonight for an update. I'm really against it. It will uproot many of our students who attend Montevideo Middle School and Spotswood High. I'd like to take this time to recap one, my family's personal situation. We moved to Rockingham County area at the end of May of last year to be closer to my parents. My dad was in stage four kidney disease. My husband and I were concerned about the demographics and put a lot of research into finding our new home here in Rockingham County. Meadowbrook seemed to fit our needs. We were only four minutes away from my parents, and it's a fairly diverse area at Meadowbrook, and it was in the Spotswood School District. Out of the four schools in the Rockingham County area, Spotswood is the most diverse, and this area definitely is not a very diverse area compared to where we came from. This was very important to us because our kids are biracial. The move wasn't easy, but the kids are doing well. My son is an eighth grader at Montevideo, and my daughter is currently a junior at Spotswood High, senior next year. They have built relationships and have finally found some normalcy. It wasn't until months later, after the kids started school, that we were informed of the plan to redistrict. Redistricting means uprooting the kids once again. According to a financial plan for the future for Rockingham County dated in 2020, Broadway High School was projected to exceed capacity within the next five years, and here it is at 2024. With this information, I'm not sure that redistricting is the right answer. It seems as if redistricting is only a temporary fix to a long-term problem. Families will continue to move to the Spotswood District area. People will continue to grow their families. If we don't build a new school for the Spotswood jurisdiction, we will be building a school for somewhere else in the Rockingham County area. Spotswood is ranked at a number one in the Rockingham County Public Schools high school. And the redistricting proposal will have our students attending a school that isn't ranked as high. I chose Spotswood for a reason, out of the four high schools that were in the Rockingham County area. On November 19th last year, my kids lost their granddad, and I lost my dad. My daughter Navea and son Jaden have been through enough with the initial move, changing schools, losing a loved one. But now you're proposing a plan to redistrict. This will only uproot them once more, but to a school less diverse, less appealing, ranked lower in education, and a school that we did not choose to send our kids to. I ask that you reconsider any thoughts of redistricting, and look at alternative solutions to this ongoing dilemma, one that is not only positive for our children, but to the citizens that you serve. Thank you.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Hey. Hello again. My name is Scott McClellan from District Three, and I would like to congratulate the new school board for their achievements this election. I was truly impressed by all the endorsements provided by powerful people who wish to divert our tax dollars into the hands of private for-profit educators. The new board also joined an Alternative Board Member Alliance, who supports diverting our tax money away from our kids' public schools as well. The Rockingham parents haven't heard much about that possibility yet, have we? Because we parents have been repeatedly fear mongered by more board members with propaganda about Marxism, wokeism, and LGBT students, with the promise that a new school board can fix things with Christian principles. I for one am looking forward to seeing these Christian principles in action when the new school board does exactly what Jesus would do, which is ban books, target minority groups, and impose extreme consequences for kids who make kid mistakes. That would be the Jesus we all know, right? One who would do all those things, an intolerant and mercyless Jesus. Well, he is, when a believer's faith sits on the very fringe of Christian denominations. And that's the problem I have when people want to put God back in schools, because it's not God we'll ever get. In Rockingham County, we get the fringe, and we get the indoctrinated, who think they can control the weather by where they stick their campaign signs, and the fringe who fully support groups like the city elders, who disguise their hate for freedom as prophecy, and the fringe who think their form of Christianity should be our country's government, which is both unchristlike and un-American. As an American, I believe religious freedom can only exist when there is a clear line between church and state. And now that our school board has moved on from the moment of silence, which respects religious freedom, to establishing a preference for their own version of Christianity, I'd like to end with a quite appropriately named verse from the Bible. It's Matthew 6:5, reads, "When you pray, do not be like the hypocrites; for they love to pray standing in synagogues, school board meetings, and on the street corner to be seen by others. And truly I tell you, they have received their reward in full." Thank you very much. Congratulations, and we see you.
Hello, my name is Leah Hill, and I have three children that attend Lacy Spring Elementary School. And we're part of the 27 children who are proposed to be redistributed to Linville-Eadham. I wanted to speak tonight on behalf of my kiddos, who love their school very much. Next year, my oldest will be in fifth grade, and my twins will be entering third. I understand that this affects lots of families over the district. Looking at the numbers on the paper does not allow you to see the magnitude this change will have on our children. My goal tonight is to put some feelings behind the numbers. When my twins were born in 2016, we moved to Lacy. I did not understand at the time what a significant move this would be for our family. My oldest child started speech therapy at two and a half years old at Lacy. I remember my husband and I, holding our infant twins as our toddler, whose backpack was bigger than he was, went off to Lacy to start his journey. I cannot put into words how grateful I am to the staff at Lacy. They provided a loving, safe environment where my child was able to find his voice and thrive. I genuinely do not think the same outcome would have happened had we not moved to Lacy and met Ms. Jessie. She will always hold a special place in my heart for what she was able to do for my son. He has excelled at Lacy. He is a straight A student, and he has been referred to as a leader by his teachers. My twins also have a wonderful experience at Lacy. Every morning, they board Ms. Sarah's bus. She has a genuine relationship with my children, and has provided our family with Christmas ornaments every year with her bus number on it. When the kiddos made their calendar for 2024, they have a big sign for August that says "Back to School" with Ms. Sarah's bus and 107 on it. They make rounds every morning. They go see lots of other teachers, because they've formed relationships throughout the entire school, not just in their current class. Our tree topper this year was replaced by a giant snowflake that Ms. Dana made. She's the custodian at our school, and my children are also very fond of her. I think it is unfair to move children out of an environment where they have developed meaningful relationships over several years. I think it is unfair to cause uneasiness and uncertainty when something as important as their school family. I would ask that the board think about these important relationships when voting on the redistricting. This will not solve the problem long term, as more housing improvements have been made to the schools that are already overcrowded on 33. So I would ask that you would look for a long-term solution to support the growing areas of our district, and not uproot children across the entire district, delaying the inevitable. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for the opportunity to speak with you. Similar to the previous speaker, my wife and I live in the Meadowbrook neighborhood, and I'm here to advocate against the proposed redistricting into the Broadway School District. In planning our future lives, my wife and I took careful look at the schools and the areas around Harrisonburg. And we picked the Meadowbrook neighborhood because it was in the cub run, Montevideo and Spotswood schools. These schools, it was an intentional choice. These schools are near where we live, work, shop, operate. And so the idea of moving children 15 miles north, that's farther away from everything we experience in our daily lives, presents an excessive burden. Any pickup from school, a school visit, a sporting event, would require us to go out of our way, beyond where we normally are. Our neighborhood was a choice, and I think as we've heard from people today, it was also a choice for them. You know, given this sudden change and the disruptive impact on our lives, I hope you will reconsider these actions. I think simply busing students to a faraway location will not resolve the underlying issues that we face in the county. Every week, we read about a new development for townhouses, apartments, or something new. Clearly, this area is attractive to families, and the challenge of allocating school resources will only continue. In the November 27th report, you know, there was a comment that was made that said, "Some may consider redistricting a necessary evil." But then there was sort of a flippant remark of, "Oh, well, we can't move schools." Well, I recognize that schools cannot be moved, but schools can be built. So I would hope that you all, as our elected leaders, could look and make the difficult and the tough decisions that I think this community needs to maintain sustainable, long-term development, and not simply take the easy way out. So, thank you for your time.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to address the apparent sudden change in religious ideology being imposed in our school board and our schools. I feel like this is a violation of our First Amendment rights for you to endorse a specific religion, and require all of us and deign that you have the knowledge or the audacity to tell us how we should believe. I think the moment of silence was a much more appropriate way for everybody, to allow everybody to, if they chose, invoke whatever religious beliefs that they feel was appropriate to themselves. And I would implore that the board reconsider the actions, and return to a moment of silence, so that it's inclusive of all people in Rockingham County. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So that will end tonight's public comment. We will head into highlights from board members, and I'll start tonight with Board Member Lore.
Thank you, Chair Cross. Since the last board meeting, I've had some opportunity to spend time with the MTC students, so the farm production students. And we even, one class, so there's four classes that regularly come up to my farm, because the sheep now live at my farm, because we needed a temporary fix, a place for the sheep to live. So they're living with us. And recently, one of the classes, the class that seems to have a little less on-farm experience, was able to come to the farm, and we actually delivered a lamb. Just so, I mean, it just so happened. We didn't do anything to make the lamb come, but the lamb came as the kids were getting there. So we stopped, and we pulled it, and it got up and started nursing. And one of the kids, who doesn't have a lot of farm experience, was like, "That was amazing!" So it was so neat to see that love of education and that new experience for those students. The other students also were like, "Yeah, that was great!" So it was a really great experience. So I'm having some really great times with students these days. I also apologize for missing the meeting on Friday, but I was home taking care of sheep. And I would like to welcome all of our new board members. I'm looking forward to working with all of you all to do great things for kids. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lore. And Mrs. Hurst.
Well, thanks for turning out tonight. I just want to welcome you all to our very first school board meeting for three of us up here. Board highlights, I think... Board highlights, I think, right now is we're just getting started. Looking forward to getting out into the schools this week and next week, visit some of the schools, get to know some of the redistricting plan, look at some of these schools that are on that plan. And I'm just really genuinely excited to get started and get working for our students and our teachers.
Thank you. I am Mrs. Cave.
Thank you. I was sitting there earlier today at home thinking about all the things. The last two months have actually been really, really busy. And I'm just excited for the future, to get into the schools. And all of the principals have been really welcoming, and I've said this earlier to them, that I appreciate it. But I got to be at the McGaxton Elementary back in November when we celebrated veterans, and that was just such a touching thing. Like, I'm very soft-hearted when it comes to that kind of stuff and things that I'm passionate about. So when I went through the line, I almost cried. I think I did. And, you know, and some of them I knew personally, and it was just such a great thing. And I get a little bit overwhelmed with all the stuff at all the schools that I just filling up my planner, and I get really excited about things like spelling bees, you know, and things like that. So I'm just, I'm excited to work for you. This really, truly is a servant's position. It's humbling, and I'm just grateful to be here. I appreciate all of your support. I appreciate people that come and, you know, are bold enough to speak public comment. I'm excited to, you know, hear that there are so many different thoughts on your minds, and I look forward to connecting with all the parents and all the things that you want to see us do to make the schools the best place that we can, and connecting with all the teachers even in our community. So my highlight is just that I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to serve.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Mrs. Burgloin.
All right. So my board highlight through all of this was being sworn in at Linville Edom Elementary School. It's a very important school. It's where my kids go, and that was just a really cool experience. It started as, hey, maybe we'll just get the small pool of Linville leaders involved, and then it turned into a whole school assembly. So that was really awesome to be able to share that with the faculty and staff and the students and everybody that I've grown to care so much for at Linville. I'm just excited that there's a big turnout here. I like to see parents getting involved. As a parent myself, I really encourage it. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgloin. Dr. Shifflin.
So thank you, Chairman Cross. So today, I had the opportunity to support JMU's lab school application before the Lab School Standing Committee at VDOE, their office in James Monroe Building. This meeting was supposed to be held in December, but it got postponed. Mrs. Laura was able to join virtually. And so this lab school, if it gets approved, will be part of Governor Yonkin's Virginia College Partnership Laboratory School Program, and it will provide our students some wonderful opportunities for excellent education, career exploration, and career pathways. It goes before the Full Standing Committee January the 25th. And if it gets proposed, we would hopefully be able to partner with them and start that work this school year at East Rockingham High School and Broadway High School. And so, yeah, we're really excited about that. So it's been something we talked about maybe a couple of years ago, so it's been a long time coming.
What would that look like, starting in mid-year like this?
We would start in August.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So we would, if it, again, comes to fruition, and I'm kind of not holding my breath since it's been a while, but we would start at East Rock and Broadway with somewhere around 50 students. Hopefully, we had the interest, so we would have to spend some time this spring recruiting, getting kids interested. And then the following year, we would expand that to Spotswood and Turner Ashby. And then what I'm really excited about, the junior and senior year for those students, really some really cool opportunities for them to take courses at Blue Ridge Community College or James Madison University. So if it once it gets passed, we'll have another presentation and share all the details with you folks and what we're planning. But, yeah, I was a little bit shocked today when they moved it forward because it just hasn't moved for a while.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for bringing that to the board tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate that, and look forward to working and going through that process. My highlight for tonight's just to be sitting up here with these awesome people to my left and right, and I look forward to working with every single one of you in this coming year and doing great things for our students, for our parents, our teachers. And I think the biggest thing that we heard throughout the last two years is transparency and partnering with parents in the school division. And so we want to do that. One of the first things we did on the first thing off was to bring relief to our teachers who needed their PLC days protected as a workday for them. And we've got so much feedback from our teachers saying, "Thank you so much." I mean, teachers I've never heard from the first two years sitting on the board has spoken to me and said, "Thank you so much." We feel like for the first time, we've been heard in the division. And so that meant a lot, and we'll kind of talk about that tonight. But that was a huge highlight for me starting the year out, and that was in response of this board. And so our first sign for as a board was to show our teachers that we appreciate them. And I look out because our next thing on the list for you is student conduct, and we're going to be making sure we hit that hard then and over the next couple of months. And no more disrespect for our teachers. As I've sat and through some student conduct meetings and see the things that students and how they talk to our teachers, if you cuss our teachers, you're coming before this board on the first time. And we are going to make sure that we send a message that we're not going to take the disrespect that our teachers get. So I look forward to working with this board going forward on student conduct and also just helping our teachers the best we can and our students. So that's my highlight for tonight, and thank you all for sharing yours as well. Next on the list is to go into action items tonight. So board members, if you'll get ready for that. First on our list tonight is the minutes. And do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the December 11, 2023 meeting and the January 5, 2024 meeting as presented?
I move to approve the minutes of the December 11, 2023 meeting and the January 5, 2024 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgloin. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say yes? Yes? All those who oppose say no? Motion passes 5-0. You may notice this year, as I go and I say yes and no, we kind of came to a conclusion as a board that we would say yes and no instead of ah, nay, and all the old English terms. So if you're looking at me like, "He's not saying that right," we came to a conclusion we're going to say the new revised version, and we're going to say yes and no. So the next action item that we have is the bills and mileage, and I believe the superintendent has a recommendation for this.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the December 2023 bills as presented.
Board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to follow superintendent's recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the December 2023 bills as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgloin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none? All those in favor say yes? Yes? All those opposed, no? Motion passes 5-0. The next action item on our list is field trips, and I believe you also have a recommendation for that, too.
Yes, sir. Chairman Carlson, board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Broadway High School, FFA Ag Education, January 24th, 25th, 2024, four students, Richmond, Virginia. Honor Band Festival, January 19th through the 21st, 2024, eight students, Virginia Tech, Blacksburg, Virginia. FFA Leadership Series, February 2nd through the 3rd, 2024, 24 students, Highland Retreat, Burkeville, Virginia. Then from Turner Ashby High School, Ecology, April 26th to the 28th, 2024, 12 students, Smith Island, Virginia. FFA Livestock Judging, February 23rd to the 24th, 2024, eight students, Blacksburg, Virginia. And then from Wilbur S. Pence Middle School, FFA Ag Education, January 24th through the 25th, 2024, nine students, Richmond, Virginia. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to follow?
I move we approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yeah. All those opposed, no? Motion passes 5-0. Next action item tonight is the adoption of the Civil Rights Assurances, and the superintendent, you also have a recommendation for this as well.
Yes, sir. Chairman Carlson, board members, this is an annual approval, and you have the policy ACA Civil Rights Certificate in your meeting's material, and I do recommend the adoption of the Civil Rights Assurances Certificate Policy ACA as presented.
Do I have a recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the Civil Rights Assurances Certificate Policy ACA as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. I meant motion. I apologize. Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgloin. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say yes? Yes? All those opposed, no? Motion passes 5-0. Next action item on our list tonight is a 2023-2024 school calendar revision. Board members, do I have a motion to approve the revised school calendar?
I move to approve the revised 2023-2024 school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. All those, or any comments or question on this?
I think the only change here to note is the change from PLC to work with prior teachers.
Correct, yes. And as I said a while ago, we've heard a lot of good things, Dr. Shifflin. I don't know what you've heard on your end, but we've heard a lot of good responses from our teachers. And so we hope that this is something that helps them out. So all those in favor for revising the 2023-2024 school board calendar, say yes? Yes? All those who oppose say no? Motion passes 5-0. The next action item that we have on the list tonight is the action item of library books, which I believe that many will be interested in tonight. Currently, our school board policy under IIAC provides specific processes and procedures for reviewing curricular and instructional material. But no similar policy exists for library books or classroom library books. And the school board is, we're going to be scheduling work sessions that will be open to the public and include invitations to the faculty and staff to inform school board on how division can most effectively review library and classroom library books. Some of the concerns and complaints shared regarding library and classroom library books include titles that reference sexual content, violence, profanity, and et cetera. Boards intend to remove these books temporarily, and that's the important word to use tonight. We plan to remove some books tonight temporarily while the policy and review process is established. Once our policy and review process is in place, all titles that have been temporarily removed will be formally reviewed consistent with our policy. So right now, we really have a very small policy when it comes to library books and classrooms. So this is what this is going to do. It's going to help us give some wording, what our standards will look like going forward. Many school divisions throughout, not only Virginia, but throughout the country, has gone through this, so this is nothing new, what's going on. As we're going to hear a little bit tonight, I believe just some of this content that's inside the books isn't classical reading, as some would suggest. It's very egregious in a lot of things that you read, and so egregious that unfortunately, we can't even put this on the screen tonight in a public meeting for the public to read, but they are allowed in our public school libraries. And I will say this, there is a difference between public school libraries and public libraries. And so we do have to have a standard when it comes to our kids. And so tonight, do I hear a motion according to the library books?
Chairman Cross, I would like to make that motion, but before I do that, I would just like to say that, you know, for so long, we've been asked for transparency. And so prior to looking at, you know, making such a motion, I just, I wanted to say that when this hit national news, I thought surely not Rockingham County. And I had people say, "Those books are not in our libraries." And those books were in our libraries. And so just as a matter of transparency, I just wanted to read some of the book titles so that we can be very specific on this motion and that so people know exactly which books that we're talking about. So we're just not swiping stuff off the shelves and disrespecting, you know, any of our employees, librarians undermining their work or, you know, negating the way that they feel about their importance and their job. So here we go. All American Boys, All Boys Aren't Blue, Beloved, Beyond Magenta, Drama, Gender Queer, How Beautiful the Ordinary, Identical, Leah on the Offbeat, Looking for Alaska, Me and Earl and the Dying Girl, More Happy Than Not, My Friend Dahmer, Out of Darkness, Perfect, Perks of Being a Wildflower, Rage, Rainbow Party, Sold, Stars in Their Eyes, The Art of Racing in the Rain, The Bluest Eye, The Duff, The Invisible Boy, The Kite Runner, The School for Good and Evil, Thirteen Reasons Why, This Book is Gay, Valiant Ladies, Allegedly a Novel, Breathless, Burned, Eleanor and Park, Fade, Felix Ever After, Forever, Glass, Go Ask Alice, Living Dead Girl, Nineteen Minutes, Slaughterhouse Five, The Infinite Moment of Us, The Nowhere Girls, Yoke, Tilt, Tricks, Under the Moon, A Catwoman Tale, Red, White, and Royal Blue, Smoke, A Court of Mist and Fury, Later Gator, The Sun and Her Flowers, Lawn Boy, A Novel, Heartstopper, All Volumes, Nick and Charlie, All Volumes, Tweak, and The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. Now, those are just the book titles. I have lists for all board members and the superintendent here showing the authors to those books as well. So having said all that and reading those specific books, I move that the school board temporarily remove these books, included in parent complaint lists that I previously referenced during this discussion, from school and classroom libraries immediately as such books were reported to include some concerning material that includes sexual content, violence, and profanity until such time that the school board adopts a policy that provides a review and decision-making process for these books and others, and then direct those same titles to be referred to that process for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Questions and comments? And I'll start first again with Mrs. Cave, right back to you.
Okay. I think when we get past our major difference, and the major difference is, it seems that some people want all the books, some people don't want all the books. I think there are some things that we really agree on and that we can find common ground with. I do agree that reading is an essential skill. I mean, I can tell you all of my teachers in elementary school, their names, and I remember what they looked like because they provided the foundation of learning, that reading, the writing, the math. I honestly don't remember a whole lot of my teachers from middle school, but I'll never forget the ones that taught me how to read. Right? So it is very important. And I still remember reading Rainbow, you know? And back then, books really were the roadmaps that we could take through our imagination to get anywhere, to be anybody we wanted to be, to do anything that we wanted to do. And that roadmap has, in 2024, quickly turned into a detour into places that no parent would wish that their children would find themselves in. I have spent hours at nighttime going through and reading some of these books, and I am, I don't even know the word for it, torn up. I wake up in the morning, heavy-hearted. It's heavy content, and, you know, we're not talking about just profanity. It's heavy content, and, you know, we're not, we're not talking about just profanity. I can handle, I can handle profanity. Like, I don't get offended when people cuss when they're talking to me, or like, I'm not, I'm not that religious that I jump on them in that way. But when we are trying to model good behavior for our kids, and we're wondering, why do they think that it's okay to cuss a teacher? Because we've said that it's okay for them to read all these books, you know, that have all of this in it. I've never in my life read such things. And really, honestly, the profanity is just, it's the skim of it. The sexual content that's in these books, I mean, I wake up in the morning thinking about what I read the night before, and it's not even real. But it is what is on my mind and my heart. And as a woman in her 40s, I know how it affects me. I can't imagine, I can't imagine how it affects a middle schooler or a high schooler. Now, when we want to talk a lot about mental health and taking care of our kids, I think we need to start with what we're putting in their heads. So let me make sure I didn't skip anything here. I just, I really hope, I thank you for the second. This is the part of it that I really wanted to have was the discussion, just so that you would know our hearts on the matter. It's not, this is not a partisan issue. It's not a religious issue. This is not, actually, I'll take, I'll take from someone's words that would be the farthest thing from a Christian. Ted Bundy, when he did his final interview before execution, I believe he did it with James Dobson, one thing that he talked about the night before they executed him was what fueled his rage. And he told that what fueled his rage was pornography. And he said, he said, "I'm not claiming to be an expert in any of these things." He said, "But what I have found amongst all the men in this prison that have committed violent, violent crimes," he said, "our one common denominator," this is not verbatim, "but," he said, "our one common denominator, what we can all link the beginning of our rage to was pornography, men that had, I'm sorry, committed all sorts of different crimes." That's where they tagged it back to, in all of their honesty, in all of his honesty, right? He was not a far-right wing Christian nationalist. I mean, we're talking about someone on the polar opposite end of everything, probably everybody in this room. But he agreed on that one thing. That's what fueled my rage. And I cannot, in good conscience, as this goes to a vote tonight, I cannot knowingly be okay with leaving such content in our schools for our kids. I cannot do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mrs. Thank you, Mrs. Cave. I am again, I'll remind you of how to make sure that we act and behave in here. Any other comments tonight? Mrs. Hurst?
Yes, I want to echo a lot of what Holly has said. Early on in my campaign back in March, I had, I had a parent come to me with multiple titles that they were concerned about. And I'm a voracious reader. I always have been. I will pick up and read books. I love books. I'm a reading specialist. I love getting books in the hands of kids. I love getting kids excited about reading. That's, that's my heart is for reading it. When I was teaching my own children how to read, I was, my oldest, he wasn't so sure he loved reading. He, it was kind of difficult for him to learn to read. He didn't like it, and my heart was crushed because I wanted him, and I want him and all of my children, to love reading with the same passion that I do. And thankfully, he turned a corner around second grade, and he is also a voracious reader. I, I will add that I think we do have to be careful because my, I understand that things that I find egregious and absolutely disgusting, people have different thresholds for acceptability. And I understand as a former public school teacher that there are a lot of parents who are more permissive than I am in regards to movies that their children watch, books that they would allow their children to read. I understand that parenting is complicated in the 21st century. I also believe that when my children have friends over to their house, over to our house, and I'm responsible for them, those children are in my care, I'm not going to be allowing, you know, an eight-year-old, my eight-year-old and another eight-year-old to watch something that is kind of edgy or on the edge without talking to the parent first. So I think when we talk, I know there's a distinction between movies and books, but there really isn't, especially when we talk about content. So with that background, what I want to share is that when I was given a list of about 20 books back in March, and I checked every single one of them out of the library because, at the public library, because I'm interested, you know, a lot of people are concerned about just cherry-picking pieces out of books and banning books based on one little passage or that little tiny piece, which is kind of, you know, makes everybody raise their eyebrow. They go, "Yeah, but in the context of the book, it's fine." So I know people have kind of, some people have that perspective, and so I read the whole book. I read all of the books. I read those books, and my heart broke. My heart broke for multiple reasons. Some of them were on very heavy content that I recognize our children walk. Some of our children do experience horrific things in their homes. My heart broke in that emotional piece that I thought, oh, my gosh, like, I, having worked with students, I know our students, some of our students come from very challenging situations. So my heart broke in that way, but my heart also broke because I thought, this isn't necessary. With millions and millions and millions of books published every year, we cannot possibly have every single title in our public libraries, much less our school libraries. Our school libraries cater to a very small population, minor children. We have a duty to protect the small children that are in our care, all the way up to the big 17-year-olds who don't think that they're children anymore. We have a duty to protect them, and part of that is what comes in, you know? I've heard solutions that are along the lines of, well, why don't you just exempt your child from the books? I can't even, my, my issue is that I don't even think some of these should ever be on the shelf in a, in a elementary, middle, or high school library, school library. They can be in a public library. That's fine. The other, you know, concept I've heard or thought to solve this issue, because this is a big issue, and we're going to need to have lots of dialogue about how our community wants to handle this, but one solution given was the librarian will email you, the parent, when the books, when your child checks out books, and then you can just know what they're reading. That's actually a pretty decent start, but the problem is, is that I've raised a voracious reader. And he will read a book front to cover before he ever gets it home. And it's not that I don't trust him. I believe that he would open up a book and look at it and go, "Oh, my gosh, this is whoa, this is whoa," and put it back, but the damage is already done at that point. He's already seen things that I, I don't believe that he should be seeing at age 14. And I don't want that for my kids, and I don't want that for your kids either. I think we have a duty to protect these young minds. So I, I'm seconding this motion. I'm going to vote yes on this motion because it is a temporary removal of these books. I would like, we're like Mr. Cross said, we are going to be forming a committee. We're going to have some open work sessions. It is really important to get community input on this and from you all. I look for this to, we don't want this to drag out for months and months and months. I look for this to be a pretty fairly quick progress, process, I think, because, you know, we, we're not going to, we don't want to be holding books hostage forever and ever. If a committee, you know, I think we're wanting to take this out of our hands and into the hands of community members on a community to kind of, on a committee to kind of look through what it is that is there and determine acceptability from there. So those are some of the background, some of my thoughts on the books that we're removing tonight temporarily.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Any other comments or questions by school board members? None? I'm, I would just say that for myself tonight, and this is not political, it's not religious, it's not any of those things, but we have a duty, as Mrs. Hurst said tonight, to protect our young children, even as I have a nineteen-year-old right now, I like to call him a young man. Sometimes he's, he's still a kid, but we have a duty as parents to make sure that we're putting the right material in front of them. And I would just echo what Mrs. Cave also said tonight is, a lot of these things that I read from these books, they're hard to get out of your head once they get in there. And as an adult, as I read them, man, I wouldn't want my daughter sitting here on the second row tonight, and I would not want my eight-year-old daughter to read, to read those things. So there are books in our high school that bother me. I mean, to the point where I had asked my wife to read one, and she said, "My gosh, I cannot believe," I mean, it's just, it was straight pornographic and very detailed in things. And so this is not a popular decision to make. It's not a popular decision, not a popular place to sit, but we do sit as a safeguard for our children and our community. And our community elected us to do what was right in our schools and for our children and for our parents. And so my vote tonight is also going to be yes, and I want, just want to say as well, thank you, Mrs. Cave, for all the work that you've personally put into this. And, because I know that you've put a lot of time, when, when these, when these school board members got elected, they didn't, this is not a social club, school board, sitting up here. We are a working school board, and we are busy. And even this week, as we go and visit schools for redistricting, that's time away from our jobs, it's time away from our families, it's time that, that we're not getting back, but we're doing this out of a servant hood for our children and for our community. So thank you, Mrs. Cave, for the time you put into this. And my vote tonight is going to also be yes on this. We do have reason to vote on this tonight, and we are going to do a roll call, vote on this. And so I'm going to ask our school board clerk if you, to do a roll call. Thank you.
Mrs. Burgwijn?
Yes.
Mrs. Cave? Yes. Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Lor?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-1. All right. Let me see if I can get back here. The next on our list tonight is, is the VDOE 2023 Model Policy. I'm, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Let me get back to there. There we are. I'm, the next on our list tonight is the action item is Governor Yonkin's Model Policies to Ensure Privacy, Dignity, and Respect for All Students and Parents in Virginia Public Schools. Board members, this has been a topic of discussion for a very long time. Many of you ran your campaigns on promising the public that you would adopt the Governor's Model Policies because his policies partner with parents instead of keeping secrets from parents. So tonight, I don't think there's a lot of time that we need to spend talking on this. We can, but we have all spent a lot of time in public talking where we have stood on this, and we promised the community that we would adopt this on day one when we met. So, so do I hear a motion tonight to adopt in full Governor Yonkin's Model Policies?
I move to adopt the 2023 VDOE Model Policies to Ensure Privacy, Dignity, and Respect for All Students and Parents in Virginia's Public Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Do I have a second? I'll second it. This will also be a roll call vote, so our school board clerk.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
You didn't call for discussion?
I'm sorry. Any comments, discussion? Go ahead.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that, Ms. Lor.
I have a question. So will this replace our current manual? Or, so are we just going to have the model policies? Are we going to have the model policies and our current manual? A lot of these policies overlap. How are we going to handle that?
Yeah. One of the things we discussed at our working school board session, and I'm sorry, one thing we discussed at the closed session on Friday's meeting with our school attorney, was how those, these details work. So we're going to be working on any policies that we have that might overlap in Yonkin's policy. We're going to be working to make sure that it's very clear to the school division and where we stand on the school division on our policies. So yes, we are going to be working with that, working closely with our legal counsel, and that's something that we talked about at length at Friday's meeting.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
The motion is to adopt, I'm sorry, where?
The motion is to adopt the 2023 VDOE Model Policies to Ensure the Privacy, Dignity, and Respect for All Students and Parents in Virginia's Public Schools.
So the motion is to adopt them, not to work on them?
We're going to adopt in full, and if there are any policies, current policies that we have in place that contradict this policy, we're going to make sure that that doesn't contradict. Make sense?
Not completely, but that's okay.
Okay. It's okay. It's okay. So I will, again, we have, I second it, and I will ask the school board clerk to also make this a roll call vote as well.
Mrs. Burgwijn?
Yes.
Mrs. Cave?
Yes.
Chair Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Lor?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-1. Next, we're going to go into our information items, and I believe we have Dr. Aldifer here tonight that's going to talk about this one.
Chair Cross, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. First of all, just like to welcome our new board members, Ms. Burgwijn, Ms. Cave, Ms. Hurst. Look forward to working with you all in this new capacity. So this evening, I'm going to be sharing some information about student conduct in Rockingham County. I think that it goes without saying that student safety is one of the most important things that we do in any public school. You may be familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of need, where we have this pyramid, and at the bottom of that pyramid, we have physiological needs, and the next layer is safety. And for kids to be able to be, to learn effectively in their schools, in their classrooms, they have to feel a sense of safety. And I know that's been a priority. Dr. Shiflett had mentioned that in his 100-day plan. I know one of the first things he mentioned whenever he was named as the superintendent, the safety was one of his top priorities. And I know from listening to many of you, the candidates who had been running last fall, that safety was such an important platform of your campaigns as well. And Mr. Cross, former SRO, has, has been on the board for the last two years and has made that an emphasis. So I think that we're all in agreement that safety is important. Again, this was a slide from Dr. Shiflett's 100-day plan, in which he mentioned safety as well. I think if you were to talk with any teacher or administrator, they would tell you that since kids have come back from the pandemic, it has been different. the pandemic, it has been different. If you spent time in schools, particularly before the pandemic and after, it has looked different, right? And that's something that we understand, we recognize, and we need to address, and we need to pay attention to that and think about how we can best meet the needs of the kids who are in our schools today. This was an article or some research that was done from the National Center for Educational Statistics. This is a federal agency that does work in this area, and had mentioned that more than eighty percent of U.S. public school report the pandemic has negatively impacted student behavior and socio-emotional development. So it's something that we want to be sure that we are addressing and we're looking at and understanding that kids are coming to us now with different needs than they had even a few short years ago. The state of Virginia is recognizing this. The, just on Friday, this was interesting, I have the date, there it was, we got this email from Lisa Coons indicating that they are opening a new office of behavioral health and wellness in, with the VDOE, because they see the need for this type of support and resources for public schools. You can see here highlighted some of the areas that this group is going to be working on, student discipline, causes of chronic absenteeism, the effect of children with social media related to cell phones and those types of things, and also with opioid and other substances. As you'll see some of my reports today, that those are issues that we're dealing with here as well in Rockingham County. This is a fairly classic pyramid that you'll see sometimes in different presentations about student behavior, about how we break down sort of the, where students are in their behavior within a school, right? So if you can't see it, maybe from where you are, it's a little bit fuzzy in some ways, but the very tip of that, the top three, or the top, or tip with the red, is about five percent, give or take, of students who have really significant needs behaviorally. So how do we address those needs? You have about fifteen percent that have some needs, and then eighty or five percent or so are students. And this is just generally understood over the course of schools across the country. We did a little bit of research ourselves and found that for Rockingham County, looking at the years from two thousand twenty-one and two, and then two in twenty-two and twenty-three, our numbers came out to be very similar to that. So two point five percent of our students had five or more referrals in those years, about fifteen percent had one referral, a minimum of one referral, and then eighty-five percent of our students didn't have any referrals, right? So it was interesting, as I'd never done this type of breakdown before, to find this, that it really did fall very closely in line with what we would see nationally as well. So I'm going to be sharing some data here with you. In the way that I've, we've done this data, so I put this together with the help of Cheryl Eastep and Liza Kaufman. We worked together as a team to gather this data. Something that we did, we looked at, as I mentioned earlier, about the, having a distinction between pre-COVID and post-COVID, and understanding that during the two years of nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, the data from those years is skewed, right? So we ended school in the middle of March, so we didn't have a full year of data, and then twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, we were virtual for half the year. The numbers just don't add up. So what we've done is taken a look at the years seventeen eight, excuse me, eighteen, seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, those two years, and then looked at twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, okay? So, and I'll show you some of the data. Now, there's some challenges that came along with us doing that. In two thousand twenty-one, the VDOE changed how they coded discipline data. So now we were tasked with looking at data that was used under a different system and comparing it to this data. So we worked to make some comparisons between this data, and it came out pretty cleanly, and I think you'll see the numbers compare, but I just want you to give you an understanding of how that, of how that worked as we were going through this. It wasn't necessarily comparing apples to apples, right? But we did some work to make, to make that work. One of the other things that you'll notice, and I mentioned this about the ninety-three different codes, that's the, the current system, there's ninety-three different codes that teachers and, or excuse me, administrators and clerks can code discipline referrals. That can become a bit confusing, and it can get a little bit inconsistent. So there's, sometimes you'll see some of the data, and I just want to say that ahead of time, that the data is not perfect, right? So I went through and checked a couple of these, and there'll be places where something I would have coded it probably in a different area, but you'll see as the data comes out, typically a school may code it in a certain way, and they do that consistently over time. So the numbers came out pretty consistent, I think, as you'll see we go through this. So what I'm going to do is show you, and again, you'll see, this is an example of the type of chart you're going to be seeing over the next eight or ten slides, okay? So what you'll see, just to give you some idea of what we're looking at, I'll spend a little more time on this one initially, is across the bottom, you'll see seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, okay? And then you'll see the chart, that this graph, and we have the numbers listed there. So those are the number of referrals related to, distinct referrals related to that type, that particular violation, okay? So anyway, just to get a sense of that, and you'll see at the top, most of these only have one bit of data on it. I did combine in some slides, too, when they seem to be related to each other. So this one was related to attendance, right? So it seemed to make sense that we would do that together. So here, this was excessive tardies and skipping. Now, again, that is excessive tardies, not just tardies. We would love it if that's the only number, the number of tardies we had, right, of, you know, this past year, four hundred and eighty, whatever. That's when a student has had multiple tardies, and it then turned into a referral for them, okay? Just as an understanding of that. Here's the cellphone violations. You can see there was a dip in twenty-one, twenty-two. I'm not sure that we have a reason for that or rationale, why that number was significantly less than the others. The others there are fairly, are fairly close. Tobacco and nicotine products. Again, you'll see there that we had a, the spike in two thousand eighteen nineteen, and that they've been fairly consistent since that, since that time, the last two years. Classroom disruptions.
Was that, was that nicotine, was that also the THC mixed in with that?
No, that's not THC. I'm going to, I have a slide for that specifically, and I-
I thought you said vaping, too, so I didn't know.
So it is vaping, tobacco vape.
Right, okay.
So, so we'll have, it's a good question, if I don't, I'm going to clarify that for others as well. So students will see a trend, we've seen a trend, particularly since COVID, the last two or three years, the technology for vaping has just exploded, right? It's become much more affordable, it's much more, it's much smaller, much easier for kids to conceal, et cetera. So we've really seen prior, in the, say, the last four years ago, three or four years ago, the vast majority of the tobacco violations we would have gotten in schools were for chewed tobacco, dipped tobacco, or cigarettes. We almost see none of that now. It's almost always vaping. And what you're going to see in a few slides is the technology within about the last year and a half has moved to where students can now put THC into a vape. So now that number has gone up significantly as well, which is a tremendous problem that we have, right? And what we'll talk about, I have a slide that talks about that, and I think you're familiar with some of the changes we made to try to address that as well. Classroom disruptions, again, you can see here, fairly consistent across the board from each of those year, each of the, the years that are given here. Again, classroom disruptions, one of the challenges with this type of data, too, when you look at it with a broad brush, a classroom disruption could be kind of what classic we would have maybe experienced, too much talking, right? A class, one teacher may consider a kid walking out of class to be a classroom disruption. Could that be disrespect potentially? Could it be, could it be them yelling at another kid or whatever? Could be them yelling at the teacher. Could that be disrespect? Could it be classroom disruption? So there is some nuance in this as well, right, as we, as we work through this. And it could go the other way. When we get to disrespect, that could be, it could be interpreted in different ways, depending on the person putting it in. But here it is, disrespect and defiant, disrespect and defiance. So you can say, see these numbers, and they have trended, particularly last year, we saw a number that went up to what, eleven hundred and thirty-five students last year in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Again, as I, again, did not look at all one thousand of those by any means, but spot checking those, they do vary significantly, right? So some of them are very serious, and some of them would be ones that we would say, that was disruptive, maybe not disrespectful, but still a large number, the highest number of any of the ones that we have. Physical altercations, here I put in here basically major and minor. So the yellow line, or the orange line at the top, would be more minor ones, which could result, could be pushing, could be slapping, could be hitting on top, on the head, could be a variety of things. And then you have the more serious, what we really consider a fight, right? So a real fight where a student likely needed to go to the nurse or be checked out, may or, may not have received some sort of injury, but there was something to, that the administrator chose to say, that's serious enough, that needs to be handled and considered a major altercation.
Dr. Alderfer, I'd like to move on there. Did you go back just by chance and look at any of the data before seventeen eighteen and kind of see what, if those numbers are closer to that, the thirty, forty range, to where we're seeing ourselves more up to the sixty and seventy?
We did not go back any further than this. That is something that we can do. We have the capability of going back and looking at that, at the data prior to this. So, sure, we can check that. Obscene language and gestures, again, you can see here, again, numbers are fairly consistent, ended up with three hundred and twenty of those at the end of last year. And then this is the one that I was, we were referring to about policy violations. So policy, all of these are policy, but these are kind of the serious policy violations, right? So you see the number there, and what I had commented about earlier, about, really about eighteen months ago, when we saw this major spike as it relates to drugs, in particular the THC vapes, of those hundred and sixty-one, the, I didn't go back and count them all, but the vast majority of them, I just know that from my experience, the vast majority of them are related to vaping, right? My theory on this, which I, I believe is accurate, it's just based on observation and talking with people, but essentially, the vaping is so concealable. Kids can conceal it, they, if you've ever seen someone do it, they can, they can take a drag off of the vape, and they can blow it in the bathroom or whatever, and it doesn't necessarily, while it smells a little bit, it's not like what we would have maybe experienced when someone was smoking either a cigarette or smoking marijuana in the bathroom. Everyone in the school knew that was going on, right? And now it's very concealable, and kids have the sense that it's easy to get away with. So they have it, and then they use it. Oftentimes, this is, we have, in all of our schools, one of the ways we find out about these things is, is we have a reporting app that students have, this is called a Stop It app, where students are able to anonymously make reports to other, to the administration. And so kids know the other kids have it, they see them in the bathroom, or they see them have it, and they, they text or they email the Stop It app, and they say so-and-so has this vape. And they may or may not know whether it's THC or not, but they just say they have it. Administrator goes, meets with the kid, searches their person, and they, they find those. The other thing that we have been able to do, because the vapes do have metal in them, we have the capability of using a metal detector wand, and we can find these on kids wherever they have them. So it's, it's a way in which we've, we've just found a lot of these.
I have a question.
Sure.
My, I think there's a general idea, and maybe you can clarify this, that a lot of the vaping is happening in the bathrooms. But what you're saying is, is that some of these things could be concealed so easily, might not even be taking place in the bathroom?
Yeah.
Just as we walk down the hallway, as we walk in the hallway?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's-
It's everywhere.
Yeah, well, we did explore, we did a pilot, having our vape detectors that you can, and we, we tried a vape detector in some of our bathrooms, we found it to not be terribly effective. So just as an example, so we, there was a discussion that we were going to actually outfit an entire school with them. We tried to do, we did a couple of bathrooms in a particular school, and we didn't find it to be very effective. Lots of false positives, we weren't, we weren't able to really identify kids, and based on that.
All right. Out of this number here, Dr. Alderfer, when we talk about weapons, can you give us a variety of weapons?
Yeah, because I was sure that was going to catch people's attention. It certainly caught mine, right? When people see that and they go, even though that is the lowest number of anything that I'm sharing with you here, anytime you see a weapon, that freaks people out, understandably, okay? What I will say is that I've done this job for thirteen years, I've not one time been, no, that's not true, there was one time, but there was an incident that happened in a school in which there was some sort of altercation that involved a weapon, okay? So these are not weapons that are being brought out and being used against another person. What happens in almost ninety percent, I'm making up that number, but I'm just, that's, don't quote that in the paper, but the-
Please note-
The majority of these-
You said, don't put that in the paper.
Yeah. In the majority of these cases, what happens is that, as I mentioned before, there's a Stop It app, a student reports another student has a vape, we get that kid to come in with their bookbag or their person, and we find a knife on that kid. Some sort of, it could be a hunting knife, it could be a Leatherman type of knife, it could be, typically it needs to have, in order for it to be considered a weapon, it has to have a blade of at least three and a half inches, right? So it's a, it's a large knife. I'm not, I'm not saying, we're not talking about, like, the little Boy Scout, you know?
Swift, Swift Army knife.
Right, exactly right. It's a, it is a knife, but it was there, in many cases, somebody went hunting, or, these are some of the stories we get, I acknowledge that, right? But the fact of the matter is, I don't want that to be alarming in that we don't have, that's not seventeen guns that were in the building. That was not, that was not seventeen knife fights that took place. It could have been, sometimes a kid will, occasionally we'll see brass knuckles or something like, or, or nunchucks, or something along those lines, okay? Just to give you some context of that. I'm not downplaying it, right? Don't hear me say this is an important, excuse it, I just want you to have a context for that. So this is a document that, incidents that resulted in out-of-school suspension, okay? So over the, this time, again, you can see, our numbers dropped significantly from twenty-one to twenty-two. Again, I don't have a reason other than a hunch about that, what that was about. As we have kids coming back out of, of the pandemic, I think we were probably more lenient on what we did with consequences, right? Kids had just been at home for such a long period of time, and our, the number of suspensions was reduced during that, during that year in comparison to the others. You can see they're fairly consistent otherwise. And then the last graph that I have here is related to discipline hearings. So whenever we have a serious incident that takes place, whether it be drugs and alcohol, whether it be weapons, whether it be major disrespect, whether it be just numerous disciplinary referrals as a kid, just over time, just continues to accumulate and doesn't quite seem to get it, then they can be referred to a hearing officer. So we have two hearing officers in the division, and they, a student's been, will be suspended for ten days from school, and then they come and see the hearing officer. The hearing officer meets with the student and their parent, and then the administrator from the school, and they listen to the case, they listen to what, what happens, the, sort of like a small little court, right? Where they come in, they, kind of the prosecutor, the defendant, they talk through it out, talk it through, and then the administrator, or the hearing officer then makes a decision about what to do. Sometimes that can be a referral to Rockingham Academy, Alternative School, or Tonight School. Sometimes the kid does go back to their homeschool, or maybe Alternative Ed in their homeschool, it really depends on that. You'll see, I'm sure, from two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, oh, let me, I'll comment about that in a second. At the bottom, you see hearings by, by the school board. So typically, whenever a case comes before the school board, that's for expulsion, the, only the board has the, the power to expel students for three hundred and sixty-five days. So when a student has maybe been before multiple, been before the hearing officer already, and is back in trouble again with a serious offense, it comes here to the, to the school board. It could also sometimes be that if a kid does something so egregious, they can jump right to the school board without going to a hearing officer first. So again, there's only a handful of those that would be, would be there. Oh, one comment I was going to make about the, if you were doing the math and you looked and you heard me say about that drugs and alcohol go before the hearing officer, or can go before the hearing officer, they can, right? But one of the changes that was made last year, as the board, I think, knows, was that a decision was made to adjust the policy for drugs and alcohol that, and this is the second one on this, excuse me, the second one here, last November, changed the consequence from ten days of out-of-school suspension to a combination of out-of-school suspension and base. And that may initially say, well, that's less punishment, because a kid's out of school- for less days. It may appear that way. I would tell you that there are very few, if any, kids that would prefer to be in base for five days than at home for five days, right? So I don't, I understand that while it may on first blush look like that's less punishment, I, I don't know that it is, even in its own merit. One of the reasons why we decided to do that was because of our absences, the attendance issues that we had, right? We have such chronic absenteeism, and if you have a kid that is suspended for ten days out of school, they are already more than halfway toward their becoming chronically absent, right? So by having them in the building for those five days, their calendar is present and they don't have as many days off from that. We also took out the requirement of the hearing officer, and one of the reasons why we did that is we found on first-time offenses that the hearing officer was hearing the case, and in about, again, about ninety percent of those cases, they were doing this exact same thing that the policy then decided was a kid was going to have some sort of poor school standing, they may have some other restrictions, but they were typically going right back to the school. So we said, instead of encumbering the, the time of the hearing officer, going through that process, let's make that more consistent. Another piece that was inconsistent was depending on when you got into trouble. So if you got, went to the hearing officer in November, typically the punishment was, one of the punishments was you're on poor school standing until the end of the year. Well, guess what it was if you went in April?
End of the year.
To the end of the year. Well, who got more punishment? Just by when a kid decided they were going to get in trouble or got in trouble, right? So that didn't make much sense. So we, we tried to make that more systematic to say that it's ninety days, it was school days. It has had an impact, I think, on a lot of kids, right? And I think the board's heard some of that, some of the fallout from some of that. There was also a change in October of twenty-one related to nicotine where that had been a three, five, and ten-day out-of-school suspension, three days for the first offense, five days for the second offense, and ten days for the third offense. Those moved from being out-of-school suspension days to in-school suspension or base. And again, part of that thinking was for attendance in some ways, but also keeping kids for, for a non, for a victimless crime, so to speak, right? So they come in and they, they have a vape with them, right? That wasn't a disrespect, that wasn't a violent, that wasn't a physical altercation. The idea was to have them in the building, there's some remediation and some help we can use as far as education related to vaping. And the other thing is, is that when they're in a base room, they're not vaping, right? If a kid's home for three or five days, many of them, that's what they would be doing there, right? So that was part of the rationale for that, for that as well. I think that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Sure.
This, the charts that you provided, which I would love to get copies of.
They should be a part, they should be in your.
Some, in here, okay.
Yeah.
I would, I was looking at that information and I'm curious, is that data based on, are those set points based on any time? So you have teachers that will write an office referral, is that for every office referral that they write or only the ones where disciplinary action was taken?
That would have been based on, if it was entered into Power School, even if that was a warning, it would have, it would have been recorded here.
So those are, those are warnings?
Could have been any of those things.
Okay.
So there was, we did run it in two different ways. So we did run another report when I did the part about OSS, that was a different report. So we could also run a report to say how many days of base were given, how many days of, how many warnings were given. We can run it through either what it was labeled as or as what the consequence was.
Gotcha.
So it should have been, even if you had a classroom disruption that was reported to the office, it came down there and the, it was just a, a warning or whatever, it would have been reflected in here.
So that's in there. So if a child is given a stern warning and then zipped back to class, that's in there.
As long as there was a, a written referral.
Documented.
That was documented and then processed through the office, yes, it would have been.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to see a, I'm, the data on, I think we've been close to a year now since we put that new policy in place for drugs. Can we see what the numbers, if the numbers have changed or dropped or, you know, psychotomic offenders, you know, get a little bit of that information going forward, because I want to, want to see if it's being effective in the schools.
I, I can, I can tell you this information, and I can go back about second offenders, and I don't have that information. I do know that when we ran this information right, just, it wasn't actually for this report, it was for another thing I was doing, at, right before Christmas break, we had fifty-five. So that would put us slightly under, well, we had one hundred and sixty-one last year, so fifty-five, once we get to the halfway point, we're, we're a bit under where we would have been last year at this point. But also, just so you all understand how we, when we did this, we also made a decision that the first time the policy dictates that you have the five in school, or most of the time it's five and five. So the policy reads that it needs to be some combination of in-school and out-of-school for ten days. Generally speaking, it is five out-of-school and then followed by five in-school in base. There are times that that gets skewed, the administrator has the authority to do as much as ten days of out-of-school if they want to, right? That's, the policy's written that way. But generally speaking, it's five in and five out. The second time, if a student gets caught a second time, not in the same year, they get caught a second time, it is an automatic referral to the hearing officer. Okay, so that the hearing officer, if they were to be caught a third time and this board, the previous board had seen a few of these, they get caught three times with it, then it comes to the school board. So that's, that is clearly laid out in how we handle this, not in policy, but it is in practice. So if a student gets three offenses of this, they, now again, that hasn't caught up to people quite yet because we just started this, right?
Right.
But to tell you, we had one student who got three offenses within two and a half months, right? And they, they came to the board. So it's only been in effect for now for a little bit over a year.
And to be clear to everybody, this is three offenses in your, in your.
In your career.
Yeah, school career.
Right.
Okay.
So I will say this, just as a, for transparency, we are, we really kind of started that once the, once they made this policy change. So we had a couple of kids that came, who had had an incident when they were in eighth grade, and then they had another incident within the last year, and they were maybe a junior. We treated them with the five and five as a first-time offender. We didn't, we basically said, once we started this new approach, where the clock is ticking on those, on those times.
Um, could you also add on that list, could we get a, some data on average on how many kids are in base in middle school and high school?
And I can get more updated information related to the drugs and alcohol that you had asked for.
Board members, any other questions?
Yes, Dr. Alford?
Yeah.
The disrespect and defiance, I think it was, is, it was one thousand one hundred and thirty-five students in a school year, I mean, offenses in a school year.
Correct.
Do we have data on how many students that was, individual students?
I do not have.
Is it possible to pull it?
That's a great question, and I can check about that. I, I don't, I'm not aware of exactly how that would be done, that's.
Because if it's one thousand one hundred and thirty-five coming straight to us, that's going to be a lot of people.
Yeah.
But if it's thirty-five, that's a different story.
What I would say, and again, this is anecdotally from my experience as a school principal and as a division administrator, that, as I mentioned in a, or showed you in that slide of the pyramid, that oftentimes that's going to be a, a fewer number than a larger number, right? I mean.
I mean, even, well, ten percent is still over a hundred students.
So, so I'll give you the number of the, this, I can give you an actual number, right? So the number of students that had five referrals or more was at almost exactly two hundred and eighty both years. It was very consistent between both years. It was like two hundred and eighty-three one year and two hundred and seventy-nine the other year, something like that, right? So the number of kids that had, so just to give you some sense of, of the, the number of kids who are, yes, that had five or more, yeah, had five or more, that was two hundred and eighty essentially average over those two years.
Different students, not, not in cat, I mean, okay.
And there were about seventy couple students that had ten referrals or more in a year, over those two years.
Pretty impressive, remember some of that.
Yeah, that's awesome. Dr. Alford and Dr. Shiflett, just to share with you quickly, just my heart, especially with regards to drug offenses, just because it's so prevalent in our community, my district especially, I really would like to explore some options that are proactive measures and not reactive. And so that sort of leads to my question, because I, when you were talking about the school where you had worked with the vape detectors and you said there were lots of false positives, and I wonder if it's the same thing with the Spot It app, once they get, are kids using that? I mean, that's a reactive measure. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you?
Stop it.
The Stop It app?
Yeah, the Stop It app. Are kids using that?
Yes.
Do you, do you find to get false positives there? They get to the office and?
Not.
Do they admit?
Not very often. It does happen occasionally where we'll have a, a student who makes a report, and that now, and it's anonymous as well. So you, they can make an anonymous report, which can make it hard to somehow track that down, but we have found times where kids have made a report and we've, we've been able to deem that as a false positive. Those happen quite rare. It's quite, quite rare that happens. If I may speak to the, I don't, I didn't spend time on this with the, the particular slide, let me go, no, I'll just comment about it. So the, we have implemented ASAP training for students after they have their first offense, so substance abuse training, education that in order for them to come off of their ninety days of poor school standing, they must attend and complete that course. And we offer the course, we do it at Rockingham Academy, we bus the kids there, we pay for it, it's part of our budget. So we have put that into place as a preventative measure.
Is that through juvenile intake or is that something that we're?
We're, we're doing it, we, it comes, I mean, it comes out of my budget. We, we pay ASAP, we do a class every month, and we pay it, we pay the instructor, we give the space, again, we provide the transportation, everything to be sure that a kid has the opportunity to, to do that. We do also, if they're not able or if they would rather not, they do have to miss school on four different occasions, they have to miss afternoons in that, that week or that month. We do allow them to go into the community program and we'll pay for that as well, that's like an all-day Saturday program, they just send us the bill and we pay it. So we're trying to do what we can to provide the education as well as.
Thank you.
Peace.
Follow-up question, and maybe this is more for Dr. Shiflett. I'm curious about our health and PE, what we're doing in health and PE as far as drug and alcohol information for kids. A lot has changed, and those seem to be the textbooks that, or resources that get the least amount, or, you know, they get really old before they get replaced. So I'm just curious if we have, where, where are we on curriculum for vaping especially, since that's like, you know, I don't know that we've got a whole ton of hard drug things that we're dealing with so much as we are vaping. Just wanted to make sure, that's one of those preventative.
I, I can't speak on that. We do have a supervisor of health and PE that I'll certainly reach out to him and find out what is the curriculum that we have. I know we have some partnerships with some outside agencies that do come in to talk about, I know in the, it used to be about smoking, I'm sure that vaping is a part of that now as they've updated their curriculum, but I'll check on that as well.
Yeah, and I know that's part of the curriculum, the one pill can kill, that's part of the, you know, the high school students that we're using, but maybe it would be advantageous, maybe to have Sheldon Rice come in at one of our upcoming meetings and just kind of give an update on what we're doing with that curriculum in particular, if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Good. All right. Board, we're going to take a, a two-minute break real quick and allow people that need to go to the bathroom and need to leave at this time. We have four more informational items left on the agenda tonight, so if you need to leave, you can. We're going to give about two minutes, so at eight forty-nine, we will continue.
If we have any students that would need to get their papers signed, if you want to get their papers signed, if we have any students that need the papers signed, okay, go, go It's getting late, it's okay, it's getting late. I don't want to see on the, I don't want to see on the road that late.
No, that's good, that's what, always changes over days.
Sorry, we will begin back up and we are, thank you, thank you for, I'm. We have two board members that are out. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and start and, and Dr. Shiflett, if you will begin on redistricting and give us an update there.
All righty, so at the May twenty-second school board meeting, this, I guess the previous year now, at Spotswood High School, Superintendent Dr. Oscar Sykow at the time gave a preliminary report on redistricting and basically shared, you know, what his recommendation would be based on current capacities and enrollment. And so at the October ninth school board meeting at Broadway High School, I presented an update of that presentation based on, again, current enrollment for students as of October, so a little bit more.
I'm sorry, Dr. Shiflett, can someone shut that door for us so we can, we can hear? Thank you. Sorry.
So I provided sort of a, an overview of what, what it would look like based on current enrollment, and then we had public comments October twenty-third at this building and then November the thirteenth at Spotswood High School, and then again here on November the twenty-seventh. And at that meeting, I recommended approval of the proposed redistricting plan that was presented on October the ninth to. that was presented on October the 9th to be implemented for the 24, 25 school year with the option for rising fifth, eighth, and 12th graders to remain at their current schools if their families provided transportation. At that time, the school board decided to postpone the vote. So I just kind of bringing everyone up to speed on where we are with that. And I think it's sort of going to be up to this board to make some decisions.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. That is one of the things that we're going to be doing. As I said earlier, that this is a working school board, and me and the vice chair have plans to hit quite a few schools even this week. And they also get to the east side and look at our schools and see what kind of room that they have right now, see if they're, how, how they're using the space that's there. And to be able to have, make a educated decision on, on this redistricting. So we are going to be working over the next two weeks. We hope to have a vote on that at the next school board meeting. That is our hopes as a school board. And I know that we want to get that information to our administrators so they can kind of plan for the following year. I know they're waiting patiently for this to happen. So just note for the parents that are here tonight that spoke with redistricting, that we, we are looking to vote on that at the next meeting, as long as we can get together. And we're going to actually hold a work session as well after we visit the schools. We're going to gather together as a school board and talk about the information that we've received. That way, when we come in here on the 22nd, I believe it is, we can make a decision that night. So next on the agenda tonight is policy, policy revisions. I think, Dr. Shiflett, you have.
So for, so for information, there is policy revisions to policy BDDH in regards to public participation at school board meetings. We've made some changes. I think you read over some of our current policies this evening, Chairman Cross. I think maybe the most significant change in this policy would be that we would not permit signs. I think that's the most significant change. And maybe there's some others, I'm just kind of scrolling through this. Three minutes, and that's, that's always been part of our policy, three minutes per speaker, and.
Yeah, I think there's a part in here of residents as well that would change.
Yes, that's right, thank you, sir, yep.
So that would mean being a resident of Rockingham County, having kids in this, in RCPS, or you graduated from RCPS, or you own a business in Rockingham County. That way, throughout the, throughout the last few years, I mean, we've had professors from UVA coming over here and commenting on public comments. We've had other groups from other places outside of Rockingham County coming and speaking. So we want to hear from our constituents, but we want to make sure we're hearing from the right people. And also, the policy for public meetings says that we have a 30-minute timetable. And that's because we have people that are bringing informational items. We have things on the board that we need to get done. This is a working board again. And so we, we need to do our best to kind of keep that. We also, we answer our phones throughout the week, we answer emails. And so if there are things that you need, questions on, please contact us. Our information is on the divisional website, and you can get ahold of us that way. So we will be bringing this as an action item at the next school board on January 22nd. Moving along, any, well, any questions or comments on that before I move? Nope, hearing none, moving along to attendance report.
So you have in your folders the attendance report. And this looks a little differently than the attendance report you've received in years past, right? We were, we would bring you a report each month and would say this number of students that was the average attendance, 93%, 94%, what have you. But we are measured, we're held accountable for students who are chronically absent, meaning they missed 10% of the school year. So for us, students missing 17 days or more. So Marcy Williams has tried to put together a report that gives you a sense of where we are year-to-date. So if you look at that third column, percent of chronically absent students year-to-date, 23, 24, you can see where each of our schools ranks with students who are chronically absent. Now that changes the longer we get into the school year, and, and, and so it's a little bit of a moving target. So that gives you a better sense, and we want to be below 15%. That's our threshold, right? So hopefully this will make sense to you as you look through this. If you have questions, please let me know, or Mrs. Williams. But we felt like this would give you better information when we're talking about attendance policies and attendance issues to see how many students are actually chronically absent. So for example, at Broadway High School, year-to-date, 11% of students were chronically absent. Spotswood had 17% of students chronically absent. Okay, missing 10% or more of the school year.
We have a chronically.
It is that.
Do we, for kids that are late in school?
Schools track their tardies as, as well, but we, right now, don't, aren't part of accountability measures as far as tardiness. But yeah, we're fighting that on both, sort of, both fronts there, tardies and coming to school. But I think we are making progress, right? I mean, it's not exactly where we want to be, but it's better than where it was.
And you've done a few, a few initiatives as well on this, right? You had lunch with quite a few of them.
Well, yeah, I, I tried to promote it a little bit myself. I have a couple of more ideas I may try out here this spring. But, but our schools are really working hard at this. I mean, they're the ones who are making sure, you know, they know who those students are on that list, and they're calling them, contacting their families, encouraging them to be there. And yeah, so it's, it's an ongoing process, and we're working at it, so.
I forgot to mention earlier that I'm, that a lot of the credit for the Stop It app came from Dr. Shiflett, one of his 100 days initiatives that he did. And so I do appreciate that, the students having the capability. I think you told me it was at Broadway, and then we.
Yeah, it was at Broadway High School. Mrs. Donna Abernathy had implemented it there and had, had success. And so when I came on superintendent, I just moved forward to put it in the other three high schools. It's, it's a great way for kids to report, and occasionally, they may report something that's bogus. But we have been able to address some issues with it. So it's a great, it's a great tool.
Any board comments? And, okay, seeing none, we'll go on to our last financial review. Dr. Shiflett?
Yeah, that is in your pocket for your review, financial review for December 2023.
Okay. All right. And I will start with Mrs. Lor on school board questions, questions and comments tonight.
I just have the one question that I usually have. Do we have any students with us? I think some of them stepped out, but yay, one student, thank you, welcome for, thank, welcome for coming. Welcome, and thank you for coming, is what I'm trying to say. It's getting late, it's past my bedtime. So we'll hopefully wrap this up so you can get home and get to bed. But thank you for being here, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lor, Mrs. Hurst?
Nothing here.
Mrs. Cave?
I think I'm good, thank you.
Mrs. Burgoyne, I know it's been a long meeting. We've accomplished a lot tonight.
I can never tell if this thing's on. One thing I wanted to comment on was the redistricting. And I just, as a parent, want to talk to the parents who came and spoke today that, you know, I completely empathize with you and understand how important it is because I know we've got, I personally, was there Miss Jessie and a Miss Dana? I have those at my daughter's school, people who fill those roles as well. So I don't take that lightly, and that's, that's really important to me to make sure those kids and those families and parents are taken care of when it comes to that. So thank you guys for speaking.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgoyne, and I will skip tonight as well, and I will end with Dr. Shiflett.
All right, thank you, Chairman Cross. I just want to talk a little bit about, you guys have passed Youngins Model Policy. And so that's your role as a board to implement or to pass policies. And my role as a superintendent is try to implement it, right? And so thank you to Dr. Doug Aldofer. He has already started working on how we're going to communicate this with our principals and start to move in this process, but it will take some time. We can't flip the switch in tomorrow, it's all, but in the next couple of weeks, we're hoping to communicate with our principals, our teachers, and identifying students with, you know, name changes and those types of things. So we already have plans in place, and I wanted you to know that. But it will take just a little bit of time, so.
With that being said, we do have reason to go into closed session tonight. So school board members, at this time, do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
So we have a specific motion that we have to read, and it binds us to only discussing these items during closed session. And I will read that motion now. I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. A2, one or more particular students specifically related to a discipline, to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in a schoolastic record concerning a student. And A3, the acquisition of specific real property for school purposes where the discussion of such real property in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board.
Thank you, Mrs. Lor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes? Yes, all those opposed, no? Motion passes 5-0, we are now in closed session. Thank you for coming tonight.